At all this meeting in order, please join us for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. First item on the agenda is public input. Remind the public that we have five minutes to speak and I'll keep that recorded and if you keep your eyes up here, I'll motion when you have about a minute left. First one listed is Nicholas Prince. And please make sure that the red button is, or the white button turns red. Thank you, sir.
I first wish to open up this evening and thank all the members of the councils and the departments individually. Governing is rarely a task that is easily fulfilled, so I thankfully and respect all individuals who wish to commit themselves to this process. Thank you very much for all of your time. I'm pleased you're here to come tonight just to address a small concern. My name is Nicholas Prince and I run a business downtown Silver City. Recently celebrated my one-year anniversary of having opened and it has been a fantastic success. There have been a few places that I could have imagined that such a thing could have ever been possible and I know that it is in no small part due to the diligence and efforts of all members of the council and the mayor specifically here. So, thank you very much. As a resident of Silver City for the past four years, one of the primary issues that has been, I think everybody has faced in some way, shape, or form, has been issues of poverty that have come up in this community. And in being able to address it, it's not anything that any one body can do, nor is there any sort of one solution that's going to necessarily achieve it. One of the smaller things that I've lived here and have noticed has been community engagement with the police and enforcement agencies in the town here. Fire Department and zoning and board have been very accommodating and very welcoming institutions. However, as a business has recently been vandalized downtown, I did wish to be able to know what the names were and who the people are, who are part of the police department. I've never, and then talked to my fellow business owners around the corner there, I wish to request, just to let it be known, that a wish for a deeper community engagement with municipal police force would be something that I would feel very well about. Where I moved here from, the south side of Chicago, we had to work very diligently and have good community engagement for an effective police force and it has always felt very reactive or it's been very much in response to issues that have already come up. And I would wish to be able to, I just have a partner I know is existent in the community. And if there are any efforts that could potentially be made or any help that could be assisted, I'd just really like to make that known for the town, for the council here. That's really much it. Thank you so much for your time.
Next is James Baldwin in regards to road repairs and plastic bag ordinance.
James Baldwin, resident of Grant County. Good evening. I drive on the streets of Silver City and I certainly want to compliment the city for repairing Alabama Street, which has had potholes in the past and it frequently gets potholes because there's a tremendous amount of traffic on that road. The people that live way out on El Es Mesa, as well as those that live in the various subdivisions, mobile parks and whatever, travel that road extensively, heavily and frequently and potholes are an inevitability. And I do thank the city for within the last three days repairing little bitty potholes that are enough to jar a car on Alabama. Secondly, I have a concern over the ban that the council recently passed in the summer regarding plastic sacks. These plastic sacks, in my opinion, are important. They're far more important than our paper sacks. Plastic sacks do not consume any living organism for their manufacture. The production of toxic chemicals from their manufacture is minimal when you consider what is required and what is produced from the production of paper sacks or the quote "green bags." I looked at a green bag at the Office of Joint Sustainability the other day. It was impressive, but it was, in my opinion, despicable. And I'll tell you why. Where was it made? It was made in China. Made in China. They have no pollution controls over there. Then it had to be transported by ship across the ocean to get here, then it had to be transported by vehicle of some sort to get to Silver City. Tremendous amount of pollution involved in that and the weight of that green bag would far, far exceed the weight of many of the plastic sacks. A common plastic sack that is referred to as a t-shirt sack, this size, costs one of the retailers in town, well-known retailer, well-established, 1.2 cents each. He buys them in lots of a thousand, which are $12.55, and a thousand of these weigh between five and six pounds. They stack neatly in an area that's about eight inches wide.
You begin with the microphone.
Eight inches wide.
Thank you, sir.
About 10 inches in length. In contrast to the paper sacks, which he showed me today, that have handles on them, they cost him each 8.3 cents. That's a factor of about seven times. And who's going to be paying for that extra cost? You and I are. Every time we go in, they will pass the cost on to us. So, come January 1st, the public in Silver City as well as Grant County is going to be hit with a double whammy. We're going to have a 3/16 of a percent grocery receipts tax coming via the county. We're also going to have to pay the cost for the paper sacks, or if we buy the green sacks, pay for those. The green sacks are not green in any sense except a dollar bill green. They require laundering. Laundering requires the use of water. And the use of water then goes into the septic system, whether it's my individual private system or whether it is the city's system. But we have a lack of beneficiation when we use the green fabric sacks. Again, the old. Also, the weight of a thousand of the handled paper bags is between 30 and 35 pounds. The manager of the store will not, will not permit his female employees to pick up a thousand sack package because of liability. The plastic sacks, as you know, they hang on little horns like this, a thousand of them, five or six pounds. A thousand of the paper handled bags between 30 and 35 pounds. And then they have the storage problem. Thank you. And again, I appreciate the mentoring of Alabama.
Thank you, sir. Next item on the agenda is council comments. Council Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I first want to mention that I attended Prospectors, the Prospectors Community Legislative Forum, where everyone presents, well, not everyone, but municipalities and the county, various other entities present their needs, capital outlay needs in particular, before our legislators. And this is something that Prospectors has been doing for, I don't know, nine, 10 years in this format. I wanted to thank Mr. Brown because he did an excellent presentation on the needs for Silver City in terms of our capital outlay and addressed some issues that we have regarding the whole harmless being removed. And one of the things I just wanted to correct was that the suggestion that I reiterated from, that Mr. Brown had made, was to move the threshold from a 10,000 for population for communities to 10,500, not 15,000, as was printed in the paper. And that moving it to a threshold of 10,500 will take care of two communities, our own and Espanola, which are the ones that are just above the 10,000 threshold that currently exists and are hit the hardest by the whole harmless being removed. So, I just want to thank Mr. Brown once again for what he did and how he presented everything. And then also, as a town councillor, I'd like to suggest that in the future, I know that Prospectors is thinking of different ways to provide information to the nonprofits that presented. And one of the things, when you're a nonprofit, you can't request capital outlay money. So, you have to have a fiscal agent, which has to be one of the municipalities or the county. And my suggestion is to begin now for next year, not for 2016, not 2015, begin to discuss your needs with whoever you think might be your fiscal agent. So, in this case, it would be talking with the town manager. But also, one of the more important things is the nonprofit has to get on whatever fiscal agent that they can work with and that the fiscal agent can assume that responsibility. They have to get on ICIP and that's also critical. So, it's a process and these processes begin in the spring. I know that the Town of Silver City holds ICIP hearings because come June, they're set in stone. And ours was set in stone June of this year, 2014. No longer can we adjust them. So, just a few suggestions and if any of the nonprofits have questions, please don't hesitate to contact me or to contact Priscilla or with the council governments or, of course, Mr. Brown because he knows the procedure. And the other thing I'd like to talk about is, I know it's the holidays, I know folks are celebrating, but I, and then I'm preaching to the choir in this room, but please do not drink and drive. I was witness to a pretty horrible accident. Both the driver and the passenger were lucky to walk, to walk away. Not the passenger, he had to be cut out, but he only sustained a broken, one of his, can't remember if it was a broken arm or a broken leg. But I can tell you that that was pretty horrible to witness it. It was also horrible to realize that I might have been in it just because I was sitting at a stop, stoplight. So, please, please don't drink and drive. If you're going to drink, find someone else who hasn't to be a designated driver to drive you wherever you need to go. Or stay where you are and then, once again, get a designated driver to take you home if you're not home. So, thank you.
Council Raymond Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you for mentioning Prospectors. They did a really wonderful job. And relation to that, I want to just express my own admiration and gratitude to the Southwest New Mexico Council of Governors for the work that they do. I attended the workshop on the capital outlay and so had nonprofits come. They still need to plan for here, but they recognized that they needed fiscal agents. And I just have one other thing and I just want to request everyone to please slow down. There are a number of streets in Silver City that are now 15 miles per hour. Slow down. I actually got kind of chased by a car on Alabama during school slow down hours. Got out of my car and asked him to slow down. So, I just really encourage everyone to recognize that actually, if you drive that speed limit, it decreases our noise and it decreases possible damage and harm if there is any accident and keeps the pedestrians and bicyclists safer. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for Mr. Brown from the Department of Police Department. Is there anything that can be done by keeping the public walking, walking on the bike lanes? Too many people are walking on bike lanes on the sidewalks.
I can address it with the chief and have them work on.
Okay, that's all right. Thank you.
Councilman?
Thank you, Mayor. First, I've been approached by several members of the community who are very thankful to the Water Department. Apparently, there's been a few issues in the past few weeks and the Water Department has been reacting very quickly and very professionally and they've been very appreciative. So, thank you to the Water Department for that. And I would just like to congratulate Harmony Phillips, who is the children and youth librarian at the Silver City Public Library. She was named the Town of Silver City Employee of the Year. And congratulations to all of the employees of the month who were up for that award. Thank you.
And I'll just be brief considering this meeting. I will let everybody know, we won't have a second meeting in December, which is one of the reasons why this agenda is pretty full. And with that, I'd like to just wish everybody Merry Christmas and hope you have a great holiday season. Does anybody else need round two?
Yes, sir.
Moving on to approval of minutes. Council Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I would prefer the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town of Silver City Council, November 17th, 2014.
I second that motion.
We have a motion, a second, for approval of the minutes of the regular meeting of the Town of Silver City for November 17th, 2014. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is reports. The first report is from the New Mexico Game and Fish Department in regards to the Silver City deer management actions.
Mayor Maronis, councillors, I want to thank you for having us here. My name is Captain Ray Altonan. I'm with the Mexico Department of Game and Fish out of Las Cruces. I'm the southwest area supervisor, so I manage this area out of Las Cruces. But the last time I was here to give an update was actually September 24th of 2013. So, we've had some action taken on our deer management effort that's actually started back in 2009 with the first public meeting in Silver City with concern of the population of the deer in and around Silver City. An action plan was developed where we took a three-pronged action and put it into place in 2012. That action plan included trapping and transplanting, archery hunting for does, the doe segment of the population, and then our officers also shooting and selling deer in properties where we were requested to go on to. This has all occurred on private property mainly around Silver City, not so much action in Silver City at this time. We actually have a few trap sites this year that when we come back, that may be in the city limits that we may be moving in as we thin some of the herd down around Silver City. To bring you up to date on what we've accomplished so far, we've, last year for, ending for 2014, we trapped 75 deer, moved them, and then we also had a minimum of 36 deer harvested on the archery hunt this year, which was the first year that the hunt occurred. Again, that hunt occurs outside of the city limits. It's not in the city limits due to rules and regulations that the city has in place. It does occur on private property with permission from the landowners outside, mainly to the north of the cities where we've been focusing all the, all the pressure and everything. With that, that brings a grand total of 314 deer that have been removed by all three techniques since 2012. We started out real slow in 2012, so only six trapped and 25 shot. So, we've picked it up since then. We will be coming back in February, late February this year to trap again. And then also, the doe hunt will be occurring again, once again, in the special hunt area that's been set up for hunters that were unsuccessful there. So, with that, New Mexico State University has been conducting a study also. They've had a graduate student assigned to this program to look at the effectiveness of our trap and transplant releases and how it affects, one, the releasing of the deer which weighs best, our survival predation rates and our reproduction rates of does that are handled when they're pregnant and then released afterwards. So, we've had some studies that wrapped up this year. She'll be presenting her findings come May or so, so hopefully in defending for her master's degree. So, we hope to gain some more information from there. So, this year, we'll trap our does 50 and call hermen and send them to the Cabal Mountains where we also have a study going on survival rates there and everything too. So, with that, we will be back to continue our trapping operation. We don't have any plans on shooting at this time unless we're requested and that fits into our criteria to do so. And then the hunt going on and we'll continue to hopefully impact this herd. Again, the goal is not to eliminate deer. We would never be able to do that, but to reduce it to where it's not such a contentious effort issue with some portion of the public. It's a 50-50. People love them, people hate them, depending on if you have rose bushes or your vehicle hit one this morning or anything of that nature. So, so it's one that we're trying to address some issues. And again, not eliminate deer, but take them down to a more manageable level. And so far, we feel we're finally starting to make a little turn on our surveys and stuff where we saw a decrease this year. So, hopefully it'll continue to go in that direction. Available for any questions?
Council Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the fact that you did specifically state, because I was on the council the time the first plan was brought forward. I think that Mayor Maronis was as well in another capacity than he is right now. Where you stated that the archery and, well, the killing by archery and shooting is taking outside of the town limits because we do have, yeah, we do have restrictions on.
Yes.
Yeah.
We have the hunt, the special hunt zone. If you go on our webpage and then each hunter that draws out receives a hunt map and a hunt letter expressing that. Plus, it's on our webpage if you folks would like to see it and where I can leave you there, where the Town of Silver City, Village of Santa Clara, City of Barrett and Town of Hurley are left out because of those reasons in there. So, but yes, there are specific rules by the city or the town that prohibit the discharge of weapons.
Right. Actually, any type of weapon.
Yes.
So, I'm not sure you can answer this question and maybe I need to ask my representative from the Silver City PD. Are we having fewer deer truck, deer car encounters?
I can answer that. We actually have a concaptor that picks up the deer that are getting killed or even wounded. And over the last three years that we've been doing, it's gone from, I believe, we were at 140 the first year we did it. Last year was little over 100 and currently we're, up to this point, the fiscal year, we're somewhere only around in the 30s. So, we have been seeing a declining number of deer that have been hit and we've had to take, address them in town.
Which that seems to...
Yeah, we do to the town limits as well.
Yeah. So, that means it's, it's working in reducing at least.
These are the, and we're coming out of drought and we're in a drought, so that affects reproduction all around. So, we are impacting, but is it a cure-all or not? We'll wait and see as we keep going forward with this. I always caution, our reproduction rates have been down just because of the drought and everything, but I think just as their data and our surveys show that there is some impact going on there, so as we keep going forward.
Yeah, I know it's not a cure-all, but I think, I think the fact that it is reducing it is, is means that the program is, is working. So, we have fewer of those sort of incidents that we, because we have quite a few of them as, as Tony Andre just said.
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Have you seen any reduction outside of our city limits?
Yes, we're, although we don't track it, we don't get near the calls of deer in yards and the complaints being filed and then plus same with picking up dead deer. We're still busy again. That's not our primary goal. We can't get to everyone. We do it more of a service, but not something we're entitled or have to do by law or anything. But it doesn't seem as much, but it's still occurring. So, they're, they're still there. Thank you.
Thank you. Start reports. Alex?
The, as most of you might remember, we, the Town of Silver City, had applied for 150 acre feet of recharge credits out at the airport. Well, feels that we already have 193 acre feet. We were granted 747 acre feet of water, so now we own 941 acre feet or two acre feet, one. 941 acre feet of water out there that we will be using for the regional water plan and project anyway. And so, I just wanted to let you know, so then we're going to be moving forward on that.
Alex?
Yeah. Mr.? Mayor, council, Jeff Bell, Assistant Fire Chief for the Fire Department. I realize time is at a premium tonight, so I'll keep it short, but I did have two things that I wanted to report on. One is our fire marshal, Milo Lambert. He was recently awarded the Fire Officer of the Year for the entire state of New Mexico for 2014. That award was given to him up in Socorro at the closing ceremonies of the New Mexico Fire and EMS Expo. So, if you guys happen to see him around town, congratulate him on that. We're, we're proud of him for that accomplishment. And also, before the meeting, I placed in your spots there a three-page summary of the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. This is something that we've been working on and developing for a little over a year now. It's a work in progress. It'll always be a fluid document that we're updating. We're creating one for the town and the ETZ. At the same time, the county is in the process of updating theirs. And so, our goal is to have both of these documents mirror each other and at some point in the future, possibly merge the two into, into one big document. But a few key points I'd like to go over that are on that summary. This was just released this week for, for public viewing. There's a link to it on the town's website for the Fire Department's page. But the ultimate goal of the plan is to basically reduce wildfire vulnerability for the town and the ETZ. That's, that's the basic thing that we are, are going for. You'll notice on the third page is there, there's a map of the town and the ETZ. What we've done is, is basically divided that area into 10, what we're calling WUI or Wild and Urban Interface Areas. And we're using the major roadways as the dividing points. So, there's 10 areas. They all basically center right here in the middle of town and move out basically like a pie chart. It's something that we're using that makes this large landmass that we live in down into manageable sizes. Within those 10 areas, we've identified nine, what we're calling high-risk communities. That term might be a little deceiving. They're more of, of target communities, areas that there's a high density of population, thick vegetation, slope, a lot of aspects come into play where those are some areas that we're going to be keying in on. Over the last year, we've done some work already out in Wind Canyon. We've met with the Cold Springs Park, what we're calling Cold Springs, which is just south of Langs Shaw Drive. And Council Raymond Smith attended a meet and greet that we held back in October at that community, basically educating the community on, here's some of the hazards that we see and also getting their input. What do you as homeowners feel is making you vulnerable to wildfire? And actually, tonight, Chief Hydrick is at another community meeting up in the Indian Hills area. So, we're working real close with the county on, on holding these, these meetings. And so, he's speaking with areas of the neighborhood of Indian Hills, trying to figure out what we can do up in that area. The things that we're looking at again is evacuation, prevention, doing some community risk assessments and basically educating the public. We're getting a lot of great feedback from the residents that, that we're meeting with and it's, like I said, it's a work in progress, but we're getting close to the point where we want to make some formal presentations with the county commission as well as with the council because we're getting ready to, throughout the 2015, go into some actual public input before this goes to get released as, I wouldn't say a final document, because like I said, it'll always be a fluid document and evolving. So, if you all have any questions for me?
Questions? Council Edison?
So, Assistant Chief Bell, I think you said that you're going to do similar sort of thing for the town?
Do what?
A similar sort of thing for the town within the limits?
Well, this includes the town. So, there's a couple of areas within the town limits, Cold Springs Park being one of them.
Right. I think I was thinking about the finger ridge that is both between Little Walnut and the Juniper that's owned, you know, both sub-portion...
I have a version, Major. So, as we're moving through these corridors, what we've done is we've looked at each corridor and have ranked them, as termed as high risk, and we're looking at accessibility, water availability, response time of apparatus from whether it's municipal or volunteer departments. And so, we're looking at a lot of different aspects, but definitely we're looking at the areas within the town limits. And that area being one of, actually, I was driving into work this morning, looking at that ridge, come in from Highway 180 West and, and see that every morning and think that's, there's some work that can be done on that mountain to, to reduce the risk of wildfire blowing through there.
Yeah, part of it is, you know, of course, one of the residents who's actually in the audience has mentioned about the fact that we do have unfortunately illegal dumping going on in the area. And then, I know that, I'm trying to think how many years ago it was, there was a fire off of Juniper, down closer, I think, to about 24th. And that's, you know, right there in a fairly, you know, occupied area. There's a lot of folks in the area. And it's just, there's a potential there. And I know that there's similar potentials, which I've, you know, are kind of outlined a little bit on here, in other parts and other districts in the town, because we do live in a town that has a lot of wild and urban interface, in a sense. We like to keep our open spaces, and some of them are owned by private individuals. So, and so, I just wanted to make sure that we're, you know, you've noted it and that we're considering things that are also within the town that could potentially be hotspots.
By definition, most of the town can actually be considered wild and urban interface. You know, even the ditch running through downtown is in some sort of sense wild and urban interface. So, the areas that we've identified, a lot of this stems all the way back to when Gary Benavides was Fire Management Officer for the county, and these were a lot of areas that we were working with, with him. And so, it's kind of spilled over into this process. Boston Hill's another area that the town limits goes into. You know, the year of Quell Ridge and the rest of those fires, we had a fire that went over the top of Boston Hill. So, how do we protect those homes down along Market Street or up Cooper Street from fire moving down in there? So, a lot of it's a lot of public education and just getting the word out there, really.
Well, thank you for your presentation. Appreciate it. Mr. Mayor?
Counselor Aiman Smith?
I just want to thank the chief and the assistant chiefs, and also the volunteer Nick Sicil, who worked hard on that presentation at Cold Springs. When I was campaigning, I would walk around there, and I would think, oh, my gosh, this is a tinderbox. And it really is up to the community to organize, identify ways to contact each other, get out if needed, get out, and then clear the brush away. So, thank you for your efforts. I very much appreciate it.
And with your comments, the town does offer the services to go in when people do some cleaning of their land within the town limits to haul that slash away. And that's a great, a great service that the town provides, because out in the county, the slash removal is a big problem for some communities, getting it to the dump, physically removing it off their properties.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other staff reports? Ms. Mackey? Mrs. Mackey?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to give some election information. I have these two-sided info sheets at City Hall. I've got them on the website, and I brought some here, but they do give a lot of election information for the public. Our next election's March 3, 2015, for the councilors in District 1 and District 3. The day to file candidacy for those positions is January 6 in my office, between the hours of 8:00 and 5:00. So, that's the one day to file your candidacy. If a person misses that date, there's one other day to file as a write-in candidate, and that would be January 13. There's a lot of other information that's on the brochure that I can talk about in our January meeting, because these dates haven't come up yet. But I just wanted to make sure people knew that they needed to file by January 6. They can pick up candidate packets in my office, and it's also on the website. There's election info on the town's website. Also, if you don't mind, I'd like to talk about the openings on our boards and committees. Again, we have openings for two regular members and two alternate members on the Grant County Silver City Extraterritorial Subdivision Commission. We have two positions open on the museum board. We have, I think we have three positions open on the Incentive Review Committee. It's a five-member committee, so we really need to fill that. We've got one position open on the Planning and Zoning Commission, and one position open on the Library Board, and an architect position and a contractor position open on the Historic Design Review Committee. So, we've got a lot going on where people can volunteer, be involved with the town government on a volunteer basis. And if they need any information, they can contact me, plus we've got all the info on the town's website. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other reports? Mr. Marshall?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. I'll keep this brief as well. One of the great things about my job is the, representing the town on some amazing partnerships, and I wanted to highlight one of them tonight. I've been working with Gary Staley, who has a contract to work with children that are assigned community service for various infractions against the community. And part of his objective is when they leave community service that they've gained a skill. And we've, working together, there, he's had crews up at the museum, and they've helped set up exhibits and get ready to set up exhibits, and they've learned a great deal about culture and working as a team and the value of the museum. They've worked in the Volunteer Center to plant a garden. They planted many of the trees that you see out in the front. They're currently building the greenhouse that is going up in the front of the Volunteer Center plot. And they've worked at the landfill, did the recycling survey. Their fixing to do in January, we'll do a demonstration day where we intercept some reusable building materials pre-scale so that it can be utilized either within that program or by Restore. So, we've partnered with Restore as well. And utilizing some of those materials, there is an opportunity to partner with Bike Works to build some garden carts and have some construction projects when the weather's too bad to be outside doing stuff. They'll have a shop where they can learn how to use basic hand tools, and partnered with Western to provide the safety training course for them before they use any of the hand tools. And there's many other projects that are going on with these kids, and it has been truly amazing to see the response from the community. And, you know, there's obviously some fear initially, you say these kids are assigned community service, and then when you see the pride that they take in their work, the values that they're learning, the skills that they're learning, as well as the team building, is truly remarkable. And most of the groups that they have worked with want them back. And they've done, they've distributed bags almost every house in Silver City. So, there's great partnerships, and it's a very, very positive activity that's going on. And Gary Staley, who's sitting back here, is available to answer any questions.
Any questions? Thank you. Any reports from the Police Department? Public Works? Library? Moving on. Next item on the agenda, under unfinished business, approval, disapproval of ordinance number 1235, an ordinance granting a franchise for cable services to Comcast of Colorado, Florida, Michigan, New Mexico, Pennsylvania, Washington LLC. Amending Appendix A, Article 4 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Alex, do you have anything on this?
This is exactly, the exact same document that was brought to you under the NOE that will enact a new franchise agreement, which we've been without for, I believe, about five or six years. It's been a while. Barrett and the county is going to adopt very similar agreements. So, it's basically the standard agreement that they've put out, except for Robert did get quite a few additions that, you know, yeah, so it's that same exact document.
Yeah, and this is the second reading. We heard the notice of intent, now this is the final version of it. It did take Robert a while to get through due to some of the things that he was requesting, which included making sure that our infrastructure is put back the way it was before, that they bring everything up to code when they do so, and also ensuring that we have the cable access television, and even adding a couple channels, or at least one channel for the mining district. So, he did a lot of work, and they weren't easy to work with, because I guess most communities do not push, have not pushed them like Robert did. So, it was good work on his part, and it's a good franchise agreement. And with that, I will entertain a motion. Counselor Bassett?
I'm going to approve ordinance number 1235, an ordinance granting a franchise for cable services to Comcast of Colorado, Florida, Michigan, New Mexico, Pennsylvania, Washington LLC, amending Appendix A, Article 4 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code.
Counselor Aiman Smith?
I'm a second, Judge. That's right.
We have a motion, a second, for approval of ordinance number 1235, an ordinance granting a franchise for cable services to Comcast of Colorado, Florida, Michigan, New Mexico, Pennsylvania, Washington LLC, amending Appendix A, Article 4 of the Town of Silver City Municipal Code. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, second, as read into the record. Do we need a roll call? Roll call.
Counselor Bassett? Aye. Counselor Aiman Smith?
Aye. Counselor Wright?
Aye.
Counselor Condon?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda, under new business, is discussion in action on recommendation of library board reference, the Fred S. Norton Estate. Alex?
Mayor, Council, I asked library board leaders, representatives of the estate of Mr. Norton, were there to inform the board that they were going, Mr. Norton had left a substantial amount of funds to the Silver City Library. And I believe it's, the first allocation that they're ready to make is approximately $400,000. And there may be, there's going to be a second allocation once the estate is closed, and they don't know the exact amount of that. But through that, we had some discussions, I was at the meeting, we had some discussions on whether they wanted, the town wanted the funds to come to the Town of Silver City for us to hold or to the Library Foundation, which was set up for that exact purpose, to accept bequests and things like that. The benefit of going to the bequest is that it can be used for other things that we can't do as a government entity, which many times were restricted because of procurement, anti-donation, all those other things. But the benefit of the foundation is also to be able to take those nonprofit, non-taxable donations from benefactors as well. So, with the bequest, you know, getting the foundation up and running, which it has a small source of amount of funds, I believe they said $20,000, that was donated by the Kiwanis Club for the benefit of youth programs. So, you know, the board took a vote and recommended to the town council that the funds be put into the foundation. And since that time, I've had some discussions with Counselor Aiman Smith, Mayor, and the attorney about how we might do that, because the Library Foundation currently is not very active, because they've only got that small amount, and it's only really for summer programs, for the youth programs during the summer. So, they really haven't had to do a whole lot. So, the town already does have, well, not the town, but the Museum Society, which has been very active, and has a very good model of how a foundation or society that benefits the library or the museum is in place. So, it's my recommendation that if the town council does decide to go ahead and agree to provide, have the money go to the foundation, that it go with a few stipulations that maybe the foundation model itself after the society, which is a proven, proven positive and very beneficial partner with the museum and the Town of Silver City.
Is there any questions for Alex? Counselor Bassett?
So, I think with Mr. Norton wanting the money to go to the library and rather than to the town in general, correct?
Well, it's to the Silver City Library, for the benefit of the Silver City Library, so it could go to either the town or the foundation.
But I think, you know, the Silver City Museum Society does an excellent job of managing the funds that they have, which is why they were created, you know, to receive the same sort of contributions. Just wondering if there's some way that the two foundations could work together rather than have them so separate. I know that they're entities that we don't have any control over, but it would be nice if they, because they would actually probably receive more interest if they bundled the money together, although keeping it separate on the books.
Well, I can approach him and talk to him about that, but at the very least, like I said, I don't believe that the estate is, they're ready to make the dispersment, but there's no huge hurry to get it to us, so, you know, we can have these discussions. So, I would be happy to meet with the foundation and the museum foundation, the society, to see, feel out what they would be willing to do to go there. But at the very minimum, I would like to come back before there's a final dispersment to ensure that you're satisfied with what we come up with.
And the only reason I recommend it, if something's already in place that's benefiting the museum, and if there's any way that they can work together to somehow, even though they do have two separate entities that, I mean, one's for the library, one's for the museum, if they can work together, it decreases the, sort of, the work that either foundation would necessarily have to do. I think it might be difficult for the Library Foundation to, having served on it, to ask them to then go into a process where they're going to be managing the funds so that there's actually some sort of, you know, income coming back without, I mean, the model is good, but I think that if there's some way they can join in this instance, it might be more beneficial, although I can't really recommend that. It's just a suggestion to talk with them about that.
So, I can have that discussion?
Yeah.
Counselor Aiman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems to me that the thing that you're really suggesting is that the library or the foundation, which is a 501(c)(3), look at its current bylaws and review them and update them and pass my line up to the museum. I know that one of the things that would be important would be to have expertise in investment. So, if the museum foundation has had good returns and good advice on investment, I don't see that there would be any difficulty in at least having them an advisory ball or even in a cross-seeded law. So, I think that that would be a perfectly reasonable thing to request, you know, Mr. Mayor, that Mr. Brown really look heavily at having the investment issue, because that's a big chunk of today, you know, at Silver Age. And we want to make sure that it's not spent right away, right, I mean, so that it is priced out appropriately for a variety of capital and programmatic and other kinds of things. So, I personally, I was thrilled at that meeting to hear about that bequest, and I have full confidence that our town manager can really be helpful in this process.
Thank you. Just a couple ideas, and this, and every idea here that's been presented is valid and worth exploring. I think one of the reasons why we have the two separate foundations that are both equal in the eyes of the IRS as 501(c)(3) organizations, they each have some different purposes, different goals, different objectives that-- goals, different objectives that don't necessarily tie together extremely well. So we want to keep that independence, we want to keep the interest of those two boards working towards their own goals and objectives. I am familiar with the Museum Society's foundation setup and it is very good, they have a great model that's basically set up through the bylaws and is very simple to adopt and apply to the, to the library board. And my suggestion would be to at least take a look at those and simply just adopt those bylaws into the Library Foundation and make it workable within its, within that group. And they can mirror things, it would be very easy to mirror a lot of the activities and still keep the autonomy and the differences and together. They can almost even mimic each other on their investments. That's a possibility as well. But I would be more inclined to, I'm inclined to advise you to have it go to the foundation. There is, there's a lot more flexibility, much, much easier for them to utilize the funds in an appropriate manner, yet not have to deal with our procurement code and our anti-donation laws that we're encumbered by. So I believe it should go to the foundation, but I would like to see them a little more formalized and set up, a little more similar to the Museum Society. And I think we'd probably be in decent shape as a community, as that agency, the library, and as the foundation would work very well. Is there any other comments for Alex or?
So we want to do that, and then I'll come back to you before I ask them to make the dispersment to the, to the foundation so that you're comfortable with what's happening. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item on the, is everybody good?
Yes.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number 2014-32, a resolution authorizing a loan agreement with the state of New Mexico for benefit of the town's wastewater treatment plant.
Another county, this is the, one of the Colonius grants, grant laws, what they do in this case, this is for the benefit of the wastewater treatment plant for a belt filter press. The total amount of the loan is $59,191 dispersed over, I think it's 10 years. And then the grant amount is $532,714. So this would just authorize the town to enter into the loan and grant agreement.
Councilor Bassin?
Thank you. So if I'm correct, I believe that it's zero percent interest, there's none?
No, 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 all of these loan agreements under this program are zero percent. Basically, the way that they set this up was if you, well, it's a requirement, but this depends how they decide to do it, because in the next one, it's not a loan, even though it says loan, it's a match. So, yes, it's, this one's a loan with a grant, the next one is a match with a grant, the two different projects.
And these funds will come from?
From the, from the user fees from the wastewater.
Sure. Any other questions? And just to add, just to add to that, that comment, the budget for the wastewater treatment fee schedule and everything has this in mind and is capable of meeting the obligation?
Yes, the, because it's such a small amount on an annual basis, it's $5,300 approximately the loan payment, you can also pay off the whole amount in one year. So what I'm planning on doing, because of the timeliness of all these grant agreements not coming when on a timely basis, it's hard to plan. So in this case, because the, it was a loan and a grant, we didn't budget the loan amount, but it's such a small amount that we can, we can make that out of the operational funds at the very ease with. But next year, I plan on budgeting to pay off the loan itself, the whole loan.
Perfect. Councilor Bassin?
Mr. Mayor, I move, I move to approve resolution number 2014-32, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a Colonius Infrastructure Project Fund loan grant agreement by and among the New Mexico Colonius Infrastructure Board, CIB, and the New Mexico Finance Authority, Finance Authority, and collectively with the CIB and the lenders/granters, and the Town of Silver City, the borrower/grantee, for the benefit of the borrower/grantee and the communities of Rosedale and Tyrone in the total amount of $591,905 evidencing an obligation of the borrower/grantee to utilize the loan/grant amount solely for the purpose of financing the cost of design and construction of wastewater facility enhancements to allow the wastewater treatment plant owned and operated by the borrower/grantee to accept regional wastewater from haulers and provide additional capacity for growth to include construction of a belt filter press to increase slet, dewatering capacity and additional slet dry beds in solely in the manner described in the loan/grant agreement, providing for acceptance of a grant amount of $532,714 and payment of a loan amount of $59,191 solely from the net system revenues of the joint water and wastewater system of the borrower/grantee, certifying that the loan/grant amount, together with other funds available to the borrower/grantee, is sufficient to complete the project. Approving the form and any other, and other details concerning the loan/grant agreement, ratifying actions heretofore taken, repealing all action inconsistent with this resolution, and authorizing the taking of other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the loan/grant agreement. Thank you.
Councilor Anderson?
I'd like to second that motion as well.
That's why I took this a year to get it, yeah.
Well, we have a motion a second as read into the record. Is there any further discussion? I'm not going to reread that. We have a motion and a second as read into the record. Roll call.
Councilor Bassin?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Council Bassin?
Mr. Mayor, I move for a short recess. A second.
We have a motion a second for a short recess. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, we're in recess. Call this meeting back to order. Next item on the agenda under new business is approval disapproval of resolution number 2014-33, a resolution authorizing a loan agreement with the state of New Mexico for benefit of the town's Phase Two street and drainage improvements on Silver Street from Pine Street to south of Lamb Street. Alex?
Mayor Council, this is another Colonius grant that we received from the state last year again. This time, it's for the street improvements, Phase Two, again on Silver Street, like you said, for that project area. In this case, the grant amount is $489,623, but rather than it being a loan-grant combination, it's a grant-match, grant combination. The grant-match, which are local funds that come out of the town's budget, $97,925, that is design and construction oversight, all those types of things. We've been doing design for a few years since we started Silver Street back when we got the Aerofon, so part of that will be credited towards the match as well, so that's what that, this is for.
Any questions? Councilor Connor?
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve of resolution 2014-33, a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a Colonius Infrastructure Project Fund grant agreement by and among the New Mexico Colonius Infrastructure Board, CIB, and the New Mexico Finance Authority, Finance Authority, and collectively with the CIB, the lenders/granters, and the Town of Silver City, the grantee, in the total amount of $489,623, evidencing an obligation of the grantee to utilize the grant amount solely for the purpose of financing the cost of construction of Phase Two street and drainage improvements on Silver Street from Pine Street to south Lamb Street, and solely in the manner described in the grant agreement, certifying that the grant amounts, together with other funds available to the grantee, is sufficient to complete the project. Approving the form and other details concerning the grant agreement, ratifying actions heretofore taken, repealing all action inconsistent with this resolution, and authorizing the taking of other actions in connection with the execution and delivery of the grant agreement.
Councilor Bassin?
Mr. Mayor, I move, I second the motion as beautifully stated.
We have a motion a second as read into the record. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
No, sir. We have a motion a second as read into the record. Roll call.
Councilor Connor?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Council Bassin?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number 2014-36, a resolution supporting an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonius Infrastructure Fund for street and drainage improvements. Alex or Peter?
Mayor, we're just approving our agreements from, our applications from last year, now it's time to turn, shift gears and go into next year's fiscal funding for 2015. What we have in front of us is a resolution supporting an application to the New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonius Infrastructure Fund. What we like to do is a street and drainage improvement project in the Vista de Plata subdivision. As you know, it's a subdivision that we've been working on. We only have about 235 feet of street that we've constructed so far and about six homes that we built. Recently, what we were able to do is put in all the utilities in that area. So what we like to do now is we like to come back and do all the street improvements. So what we'll be doing is new construction. It'll be brand new construction, brand new paving, brand new curb and gutter, sidewalks on both sides of the streets. At this time, what we'd like to do is we like to put in all the conduit for lighting because the lighting just wasn't put into the project at this time, but we'll leave it set up to where we could possibly do it in the near future. The streets that we're looking at constructing are Camino de Suena, which approximately 1,700 linear feet will be constructed, and then a small portion of Cali Street will be added to the existing Cali Street, about a block, about 411 feet to tie in Camino de Suena to Cali Street, which will then let out on Gold Street. So that is the project that we'd like to submit for FY 2015 funding.
Any questions? Councilor Connor?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve of resolution 2014-36, a resolution supporting an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonius Infrastructure Fund for street and drainage improvements.
We have a motion a second for approval of resolution number 2014-36, a resolution supporting an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonius Infrastructure Fund for street and drainage improvements. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion a second as read into the record. Roll call.
Councilor Connor?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Council Bassin?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number 2014-39, a resolution supporting an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonius Infrastructure Fund for wastewater treatment plant improvements. I almost thought I was going to read the same thing again.
Mayor and Council, this, this resolution is, would authorize the staff to submit a grant application benefiting the wastewater treatment plant, continued upgrades for the wastewater treatment plant. It would be for a grit chamber, to upgrade the grit chamber, which catches the fine stuff that's left. Robert went over this, so he couldn't be here. So, yes, it's to upgrade and, because we actually, they've been having problems with this part of the, of the plant. A lot of it was, this portion was actually built in 1971, so we would upgrade it and replace it. Again, it would be submitted as a, like the above filter press, as a regional project because of Rosedale and Tyrone being served as well. So that's what we plan on doing.
Any questions for Alex? Undertaken the motion. Councilor Bassin?
Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2014-39, supporting an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonius Infrastructure Fund for improvements to the town's wastewater treatment plant.
We have a motion a second for approval of resolution number 2014-39, a resolution supporting an application to New Mexico Finance Authority under the Colonius Infrastructure Fund for wastewater treatment plant improvements. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion a second as read into the record. Roll call.
Councilor Bassin?
Aye.
Councilor Anderson?
Aye.
Council Ray?
Aye.
Council Connor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number 2014-34, a resolution supporting a recreational trails program application and maintenance commitment. Council Ray?
Thank you, Mayor. This resolution here is going to become, hopefully, a good one. It's going to be a good thing for the Town of Silver City. We're going to start, it's going to be a starting point. And the Town of Silver City is going to ask for a loan to, in the amount of about $45,000 from the DOT. It's going to be good because it's going to have signage, something from where you can go, bikers, people that want to walk, mom people, just anybody. It's going to have a, it's going to be a good thing for the Town of Silver City. I'm sorry, I cannot. Anyway, anyway, I hope that this resolution passes by the rest of town people here, town council people. I'm for it. And with that.
Congress, any questions? Council Bassin?
Council Ray, I can always ask the town manager to answer, because I know you're not feeling well. So this is not necessarily a loan, it's a cost reimbursement program where we have to have the ability of all the funds to pay all upfront costs and that we have to, we, it's required a local match of 14.56%. It's an interesting percentage.
Yes, it's part of the federal funds that pass through the state for these types of programs. And yes, it's just signage to become, yeah, met game, she's been working on it more than for me.
So some of it, though, we're only paying 14.56% of it, correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
About $6,500.
I'm sorry, how much?
About $6,500. And in support of that, working with Arts and Culture District, they've also made a commitment to assist us with that match. So we, the town budget itself will not be wholly responsible for that $6,500.
So, but we still have to pay all the costs upfront and then get reimbursed for that portion that is not our match, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. And the total amount that we're looking for is $45,000?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, Council Ray, for submitting this, this is, I think, really incredible legislation and something that's really going to be good. good for tourism and for everyone in the town, period. It's wonderful. Thank you.
I do believe this is a good project, and I fully support Counsel Ray in bringing this forward, and hopefully the council passes it. It's a, seems like a very palatable amount, easy for our budget to handle, even upfront, and the $6,500. But the fact that the ACD is even willing to help out, that shows tremendous community support and, and the ability to, and efforts to see this go through, so hopefully it does move forward. And with that, I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Ray?
One more thing, I want to thank Michelle and George and Mr. Marshall for helping me up with this right here, and it is a good thing for Town Silver City, not just for Town Silver City, but for actually for New Mexico also. And with that, I move to approve resolution number 2014-34, a resolution declaring the eligibility and intent of the Town Silver City to submit an application to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for Federal Fiscal Year 2016 slash 2017 recreational trails program funds.
Counsel Anderson?
I'll second the motion, as read.
We have a motion, a second, for approval of resolution number 2014-34, a resolution declaring the eligibility and intent of the Town Silver City to submit an application to the New Mexico Department of Transportation for Federal Fiscal Year 2016 slash 2017 recreational trails program funds. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. Roll call.
Counsel Cunnell?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Edison?
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number 2014-35, a resolution approving the submittal of a recertification application to the Mortgage Finance Authority for 2014-2015 house-by-house homeowner rehabilitation program. Alex?
Mayor and Council, the town has been doing house, housing rehabilitation, the house-by-house program since 2002. We've either replaced or completely remodeled homes that are really not very inhabitable for residents, not just of Silver City, we've actually done a few out in the county, and I believe we've done somewhere in the range of about 38 homes over the years, and this would just be a continuing, continuing process of, I think we do like between two and three a year.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to approve resolution number 2014-35, approving the submittal of a recertification application to the Mortgage Finance Authority for the 2014-2015 house-by-house homeowner rehabilitation program.
Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Anderson?
I'll second the motion, as read.
We have a motion, a second, for approval of resolution number 2014-35, approving the submittal of a recertification application to the Mortgage Finance Authority for the 2014-2015 house-by-house homeowner rehabilitation program. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. Roll call.
Counsel Edison?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Cunnell? Aye.
Next item on the agenda, we're down to H, so we're getting close. Approval disapproval of resolution number 2014-37, a resolution supporting the designation of the Murray Ryan Visitor Center as the Silver City Urban Trail Head. Counsel Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we've talked about in the past, a resolution can direct staff and folks to take some action, and it can also be a public statement of our values and what's important to us. So I just want to recognize that the town and contained citizens have been working on the big ditch and the trailway systems for a long time, since the 70s, and if anyone here in the room has gone to the Murray Ryan Visitor Center, you know what a beautiful place it is. It's, features cultural aspects, directs visitors and residents to wonderful places within our town, museums, the libraries, various other attractions, and really is a hub where people can start out and then generate activity in the rest of the town. And the location therefore, the visitor center, is ideal for access both to downtown and to what we are visualizing as a more complete and extensive trail system. And I want to say again, it is the actions of engaged citizens that really spurs us forward, motivates us all and spurs us forward, and such engaged citizens, we're working with town staff, we were designated a Continental Divide Trail community right there at the visitor center, we held the celebration. And so what this resolution does is that it formally recognizes that we value our trail systems, we value our downtown, and that we want to have that visitor center designated as the Silver City Trail Head, Urban Trail Head, not just for the Continental Divide Trail, which we hope will be directed there, and not only to work with the university for other feeders into other trails, but to recognize it as the hub to an extensive trail system that we've been working on for some time, and I see us working on more. That's my pitch.
Thank you. Counsel Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I also want to thank Counselor Aiman Smith for proposing this resolution, because I think it mentions nicely with what we're working with, what Counsel Ray, the resolution we just adopted for funding for the recreational trails program application and maintenance commitment. I, this is tying everything together, and the location at the Murray Ryan Visitor Center, which is the hub for many folks to stop and find out what's what in Silver City and surrounding areas. I think it's, it's a wonderful designation, and I'm hoping that we, as it says in number two, under the therefore be it resolve, that, that we will do some really nice promotion, signage, and other sorts of advertising materials to really get that out to everyone that comes in and folks that may be driving by on Highway 90, so I'm really pleased about this. Thank you, and I support it.
Any other comments?
I, I fully support Counsel Aiman Smith in moving this forward, and I appreciate there's several folks in the audience who have worked extremely hard at, in all the elements that came before this, and I know are going to work very hard in all the activities and pieces that will be coming afterwards, and in helping Counsel Aiman Smith with this document and seeing the town recognize this as a, as a trail head, very important, and I appreciate your work, Nancy Shelby, Bruce, everybody, and Lindy. Any further comments?
It's just the beginning.
Just the beginning. I'll entertain a motion.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to express extreme gratitude to that group over there, thank you for all the work you're doing. Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Anderson?
I move to approve resolution 2014-37, a resolution supporting the designation of the Murray Ryan Visitor Center as the Silver City Urban Trail Head.
Counsel Edison?
Mr. Mayor, my second motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second, for, for approval of resolution number 24, resolution 2014-37, a resolution supporting the designation of the Murray Ryan Visitor Center as the Silver City Urban Trail Head. Is there any further discussion?
No, sir.
We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. Roll call.
Counsel Edison?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Cunnell? Aye.
Motion carries.
Goodness, just a few words.
The next item on the agenda is approval disapproval of resolution number 2014-38, a resolution authorizing and approving financial assistance and project approval for a bicycle master plan. Counsel Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, again, is a, is a resolution that directs staff to submit a grant proposal, and the grant proposal is for a master plan for bicycling, and let me tell you a few reasons why it's important to have a master plan. I first want to acknowledge that there have been people riding bicycles and working on a variety of programs for years here, encouraging safe rides to school, developing potential identified routes for bicycling, incorporating bicycling and then safe pedestrian ways, really working hard on developing a bicycle and pedestrian friendly community here. And this, this resolution would have one of our staff, or our department, try to get a grant to support a master plan, and what a master plan would do would be to incorporate a lot of that work, a lot of that work, just some more citizen engagement to update since the last time so much done, and to really work with all of the other efforts that are going on, the trail systems, the other kinds of work that has been going on, the Continental Divide Trail, the Greenway Plan, the Downtown Plan, the Flood Plane Management Plan, all of these things together. And the reason that a master plan is important is because it positions us as a platform to get other monies. If we then find foundations or other federal grants or state grants that would be for transportation, then if we have a master plan, it makes it much easier for us to qualify and get those funds. It'd be really useful, for example, for discussions with the Department of Transportation in terms of adapting some of the transportation areas that are kind of scarring in town, like 90 and 180, if we had a bicycle master plan that we could refer to and use as a discussion point with them. And I personally, since I am really big on economic development, I want to put out here that having a master plan formally acknowledges the economic benefits of integrating these recreational and quality-of-life trails and other systems that we are really working on. Having a master plan is another block here in terms of the sense of place that we're developing here for tourism, for our own residents, and for potential new residents, people who I want to have, the people who are, want to be engaged, who I want to have relocate here. So for those reasons, I am sponsoring this resolution for a master planning bicycle grant.
I completely agree with, with Counsel Aiman Smith's statements. I just wanted to say that once we're, we're done with this, this plan, we plan to update our comprehensive plan, which would incorporate all of these plans into, into the comprehensive plan from every, all the different aspects that we've been looking at individually, and, and put it into the big picture. And, and so I just wanted to add that, once we're done with that, we're going to proceed to, to get that big picture, start, get it started, put together.
Thank you.
Counsel Edison?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to, one more time, I'm going to thank Counsel Aiman Smith for bringing this forward, because I think that all that hard work that everyone has been doing over all the years will be able to be concentrated into, into one bicycle master plan that will then, you know, sort of hook into all of these other plans that we have, so that it's one big comprehensive, this is the direction that Silver City is moving forward in. And so I know that over the years, many folks have come before the council, many groups, and I like the fact that, once again, they'll all be consolidated, all that hard work will be recognized in a more comprehensive plan, so, thank you.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion. Counsel Aiman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve resolution 2014-38, a resolution authorizing and approving financial assistance and project approval for a bicycle master plan.
Counsel Edison?
Mr. Mayor, my second motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second, for approval of resolution number 2014-38, a resolution authorizing and approving financial assistance and project approval for a bicycle master plan. Is there any further discussion? We have a motion, a second, as read into the record. Roll call.
Counsel Edison?
Aye.
Counsel Anderson?
Aye.
Counsel Ray?
Aye.
Counsel Cunnell? Aye.
Next item on the agenda is appointment to the Planning and Zoning Commission. We have an application from Sheri Ann Clements, and who's the current chair, and has been doing a wonderful job, and I would like to reappoint her. Is there any objections?
No, she's great.
She is appointed. Next item on the agenda is appointment to the Library Board. We have an application from Hannah Nell Wex, Weeks, is it Weeks or Wex? Wex. Perfect. Who's in the audience?
I haven't quite read it.
Which is good. And I've spoken with some staff and some board members, and they're all in favor of her appointment. Is there any objection?
No, sir.
No, sir.
She is appointed. Thank you for your application. Next item on the agenda is discuss and vote on changing the regular council meeting scheduled for January 27, 2015, to Wednesday, January 21, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. at the same location. And this is due to the, the state legislature, for Grant County Days that a number of us would like to attend. Is there any comments, discussion? And, and the room is available, we have it all scheduled, so we can make this change. I will entertain a motion. Counsel Edison?
Mr. Mayor, I move to change the regular town council meeting schedule for January 27, 2015, to Wednesday, January 21, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers.
Counsel Anderson?
Mr. Mayor, my second motion is stated.
We have a motion, a second, to change the regular council meeting schedule for January 27, 2015, to Wednesday, January 21, 2015, at 6:00 p.m. in these chambers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Counsel Aiman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, I move to adjourn. My second motion.
We have a motion, a second, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We are adjourned.